I'd like to call this Wednesday, April the 26th. Planning Commission's for Order. May I have a roll call?
Chairman, Madhav Jackson Denmark.
Here.
Commissioner Kathleen Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Rich Delcor.
Here.
Commissioner Jim Glenn.
Here.
Commissioner Lydia DePaul.
Here.
Vice Chairman Charlie Wetmore. Commissioner Jason Stewart.
Notice regarding adjournment, the Planning Commission will not hear any new items after 9:30 PM unless authorized by a majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular meeting or special meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments, every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall address the chairman and in speaking, avoid disrespect to the commission staff or other members of the meeting. State your name and address when speaking for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. May I have an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a civility pledge that is new. So we pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the town of Bluffton. May I have an adoption of the minutes from March the 22nd?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay. Do we have any old business? Okay, so we will move on to new business. 1268 May River Road Development Plan. Request by Nathan Suri of Suri Engineering on behalf of property owner, May River Project LLC for approval of preliminary development plan application. Dan?
Thank you. This is a preliminary development plan for 1268 May River Road. It's a request by Nathan Suri of Suri Engineering on behalf of the property owner, May River Project LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan application. Project proposes site improvements necessary to accommodate conversion of the site used from residential to commercial. It's a 0.66 acre properties on Neighborhood General Historic District and it's located at 1268 May River Road. Site currently houses the historic structure Nathaniel Brown's Cottage built in 1950 with an outparcel building and wooden shed. And this is the subject property just east of the Bluffton Police Substation on May River Road. This is an aerial of the same property. The application is for a preliminary development plan located within the Neighborhood General Historic District and is subject to the standard set forth in the Town of Bluffton Unified Development Ordinance. The project proposes the construction of a concrete apron, gravel access drive, rain garden, gravel parking spaces, and a concrete van accessible ADA space to accommodate the conversion of the site used from residential to commercial. There were staff comments on the preliminary development plan that were reviewed on March 22nd of 2023. The applicant provided a response on March 28, 2023, and also, as the site is located within the Neighborhood General Historic District, a certificate of appropriateness will be required. Here is the site plan. It's got a slide that takes a little bit closer. This is May River Road out here. And this would be a new concrete apron 24 feet wide, coming in at 24 feet. 24 feet is the required width from the DRC Arms Manual, I believe. Comes in, comes to the back, providing a handicap space here, two additional spaces here. There are actually four on-street parking spaces here, meeting the parking space requirement. This is the Nathaniel Brown's Cottage. This is the accessory structure. Both of them are being proposed for commercial use, going from residential to commercial. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in Section 310 3A of the UDO in assessing an application for a preliminary development plan. These are the criteria. Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action. They can approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. And the town staff finds that the requirements of Section 310 3A of the Unified Development Ordinance is met and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the application as submitted. I'll open up for questions, and Nathan Suri, the applicant, is here for any questions as well.
Anyone have any questions for Dan at the moment? Does the applicant want to speak?
Um...
Please come to the... Please state your name.
Hey, I'm Nathan Suri with Suri Engineering. It's a pretty straightforward project. We're just trying to convert the use from residential to commercial. We've gone through, met all the UDO requirements, been through the DRC process, and... We don't have much more to add than that.
Question, do you have any idea what this will be used for?
It'll be an office space for, like, I don't know if you want to share, for, it's a construction company's gonna come in there and use a lot.
And then will it be used for the accessory building of some sort?
That will also be a commercial office. That would be rented out separately. We work together. I'm not sure the owners are back there. It's possible to work out.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, we're trying to, uh... Right now, we have some interest in the first, the front building, but we're putting together a architectural plan for the smaller structure in the back. And, you know, we're working through some of the plans with the Historic District, but we're just trying to have two separate commercial spaces. Right now, the, um, we have a construction company, pretty, pretty well-known construction company that would love to take over that space. And then, um, as of right now, they don't want that secondary space, but they said after we get it fixed up, they might actually end up wanting to take that out as like a design center or something to showcase that. But we're thinking like a small little art studio or, you know, a number of different things have come up, something like that for a commercial.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kathleen, did you have something?
Lots of thoughts about the plan. Um, I have a big concern about the 70-inch live oak on the, on the property. Uh, that being, are y'all, can y'all see where that 70-inch live oak is? Um, so... In fact, it looks like to me like that sidewalk is concrete and pervious, probably three to four feet from the trunk of that tree as shown on the, um, survey. Which means the root flare comes out beyond that and you're, you're coming up really close to that. Um, the compacted gravel drive that is adjacent to that would probably within, I don't know, six feet of the base of that trunk or, you know, where that, where that tree is located. Um, again, those roots being, they're dug out, that's gonna damage a lot of the roots because you're taking out the top eight inches to put in this gravel drive, which is, that's where all the roots for this large specimen tree are located. This tree is clearly significant enough that impacts even the feeling on the streetscape. So, um, I, I would like to see if I can get you to entertain the idea of reducing the width of that gravel drive to pull it away from that 70-inch live oak and then either relocate the service yard or relocate the access to the service yard.
The gravel wall or the drive, because the drive they can't change a dimension.
The walkway, relocate the walkways to the service yard or relocate the service yard and access to it so that you're, like, so you're minimizing the amount of impact to that tree as much as possible.
So for the front door, would you be okay if we just came off and, and kind of, I need like a show in and then maybe put the service yard in the back or something along those lines?
And if you could make it pervious. I mean, you can't take, I mean, the front door is where the front door is. I can't make you change the conditions of that building. Um, but changing how you access, you know, that door.
So maybe not. So maybe not changing the access of the door, but changing the...
No, say, the service area so that you don't go all the way back to the area and then make what you do access to the front door pervious. The other, um, and then reduce the width of that gravel driveway. I don't think it needs to be, because it's, since you're not parking off of it, it doesn't have to be 24 feet.
Well, isn't that a requirement, Dan?
We went down to the minimum by the building at 22 feet. The state is requiring 30 foot wide off of the road, so we're really in a tough spot. I mean, these are structures that have been around for 50 years, so it's, it's kind of just trying to make the site work with what we have and with the request by SCDOT. It's not much of a, really, an alternative that we can go with.
You don't have to have it 24 feet though, that gravel drive, when it comes, after it comes off of that 30 foot.
So you'd like it to go down to 22?
At least. I think you can go to, I think the guidelines allow for 20, but that would be something to confirm with.
Dan, can you?
The Arms Manual is just giving a width of the apron or part of the drive?
Yeah, the apron is 30 by 30, so they said you just have to have a 30 by 30 pole off and then we can go.
So, so you can taper off of that 30 down to, like, our, our UDO would allow a 20-foot wide strip to, to weigh, to weigh travel?
It's 20 feet.
Because there's no park in there?
Yeah.
Right.
And you can take that 20 feet then all the way around to the part where you do get to the parking area. So that's...
Then it has, it has to go to 22 where you have to park the vehicle apart.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there's a little taper of section, but...
That way you can pull it off the buildings a little bit too. Um, probably a little less easy to deal with is, but also needs to be addressed is ADA access to that accessory building or the secondary building.
To, okay. Um, I guess if we're shrinking now, we can fit a...
You just got to get across that gravel drive in an ADA compliant path.
Currently, I was gonna shout, I was gonna ask Dan. Dan, for, for the preliminary development plan, do we need to be concerned with that portion or does that come at final and landscape and then final development plan as far as accessibility?
Well, at final development plan, we can make sure that the access is in there. Doesn't need, you guys don't need to condition approval with it. And, and then the, uh, the, they're not required to provide a landscape line until final development plan, so that...
I was just verifying that for our purposes, we can't, um, make a condition about ADA accessibility because it's gonna be, that's not what we're talking about right now. We're doing the preliminary development plan. That'll come along the way.
But we'll make sure that, that ADA accessibility...
You guys don't make sure it applies during the final.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Well, if it has to be consistent with, um, UDO code, UDO for Section 5, that would require ADA compliance in that section, so it would not be compliant with...
That's what I'm saying, they'll do that at the final.
I understand what I'm saying.
Saying like, right now, they don't have to, like, show every little detail because this is a preliminary plan.
Right, the charge...
There were staff comments on the preliminary development plan that were reviewed on March twenty second of two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant provided a response on March twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three. And also, as the site is located within the neighborhood of General Storet District, a certificate of appropriateness will be required. Here is the site plan. It's got a slide that takes a little bit closer. This is May River Road out here. And this would be a new concrete apron twenty, twenty-four feet wide, coming in at twenty-four feet. Twenty-four feet is the required width from the D O T arms manual, I believe. Comes in, comes to the back, providing a handicap space here, two additional spaces here. There are actually four on-street parking spaces here, meeting the parking space requirement. This is the Nathaniel Brown's cottage. This is the accessory structure. Both of them are being, being proposed for commercial use, going from residential to commercial. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section three-ten-three-A of the U D O in assessing an application for development, for a preliminary development plan. These are the criteria. Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action. They can approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. And the town, uh, town staff finds that the requirements of section three-ten-three-A of the Unified Development Ordinance is met and recommends that the planning commission approve the application as submitted. I'll open up for questions, and Nathan Sturridge, the applicant, is here for any questions as well.
Anyone have any questions for Dan at the moment? Does the applicant want to speak?
Um.
Please come to the, sorry. Please state your name.
Hey, I'm Nathan Sturridge with Sturridge Engineering. Um, it's a pretty straightforward project. We're just trying to convert the use from residential to commercial. We've gone through, met all the U D O requirements, been through the D R C process, and we don't have much more to add than that.
Question, do, uh, do you have any idea what this will be used for?
Um, it'll be an office space for, um, like, I don't know if you want to share. For, if a construction company is going to come in there and use, use a lot.
And then will be used for the accessory building of some sort?
Um, that will also be a commercial office. That would be rented out separately. We work together. I'm not sure the owners are back there. It's possible to work out. You know, we're just, we're, we're just, we're trying to, uh,
right now, we have some interest in the first, the front building. Um, but we're putting together a architectural plan for the smaller structure in the back. And, you know, we're, we're, we're working through some of the plans with the historic district, but, uh, we're just trying to have two separate commercial spaces. Right now, the, um, we have a construction company, pretty, pretty well-known construction company that would love to take over that space. And then, um, as of right now, they don't want that secondary space, but they said after we get it fixed up, they might actually end up, uh, want to take that. It's like a design center or something to showcase that, but, um, but we're thinking like a small little art studio or, you know, a, a number of different things have come up, but something like that for a commercial.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kathleen, did you have something?
Lots of thoughts about the plan. Um, I have a big concern about the seventy-inch live oak on the, on the property. Uh, that being that, are you, can y'all see where that seventy-inch live oak is? So, in fact, it looks like to me like that sidewalk is concrete and pervious, probably three to four feet from the trunk of that, uh, tree as shown on the, um, survey, which means the root layer comes out beyond that, and you're, you're coming up really close to that. Um, I've, the compacted gravel drive that is adjacent to that, probably within, I don't know, six feet of the base of that trunk, or, you know, where that, where that tree is located. Um, again, those roots being they're dug out, that's going to damage a lot of the roots because you're taking out the top eight inches to put in this gravel drive, which is, that's where all the roots for this large specimen tree are located. This tree is clearly significant enough that impacts even the feeling on the streetscape. So, um, I, I would like to see if I can get you to entertain the idea of reducing the width of that gravel drive to pull it away from that seventy-inch live oak and then either relocate the service yard or relocate the access to the service yard.
The gravel wall or the drive, because the drive, they can't change a dimension.
The walkway, relocate the walkways to the service yard, uh, or relocate the service yard and access to it. So that you're, like, so you're minimizing the amount of impact to that tree as much as possible.
So for the front door, would you be okay if we just came off and, and kind of, I need like a show in and then maybe put the service yard in the back or, or something along those lines?
And if you could make it pervious. I mean, you can't take, I mean, the front door is where the front door is. I can't make you change the conditions of that building. Um, but changing how you access, you know, that door.
So maybe not changing the access of the door, but changing the.
No, say each service area, so that, that you don't go all the way back to that area, and then make, what you do access to the front door pervious. The other, um, and then reduce the width of that gravel driveway. I don't think it needs to be, because it's, since you're not parking off of it, it doesn't have to be twenty-four feet.
Isn't that a requirement, Dan?
We went down to the minimum by the building at twenty-two feet. The state is applying thirty-foot wide off of the road. So we're really in a tough spot. I mean, these are structures that have been around for fifty years. So it's, it's kind of just trying to make the site work with what we have and with the request by S C D O T. It's not much of a, of really an alternative that we can go with.
You don't have to have it twenty-four feet, though, that gravel drive, when it comes, after it comes off of that thirty foot.
So you'd like it to go down to twenty-two?
At least. I think you can go to, I think the guidelines allow for twenty, but that would be something to confirm with.
Dan, can you?
The, the arms manual is just giving a width of the apron or?
Yeah, the apron is thirty by thirty. So they said you just have to have a thirty by thirty pull-off, and then we can go.
So, so you can taper off of that thirty down to, like, like our, our U D O would allow a twenty-foot wide strip to, to.
Two-way traffic.
Two-way traffic.
It's twenty feet.
Because there's no parking there?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And you can take that twenty feet then all the way around to the part where you do get to the parking area. So that's.
Then it has, it has to go to twenty-two where you have to park the vehicle apart.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there's a little taper of section five.
That way you can pull it off the buildings a little bit, too. Um, probably a little less easy to deal with is, um, but also needs to be addressed is ADA access to that accessory building or the secondary building.
To, okay. Um, I guess if we're shrinking down, we can fit a.
You just got to get across that gravel drive in an ADA compliant path.
Currently, I was going to shout, I was going to ask Dan.
Kathleen?
Dan, for, for the preliminary development plan, do we need to be concerned with that portion? Or does that come at final and landscape and then final development plan as far as accessibility?
Well, at final development plan, we can make sure that the access is, is in there. Doesn't need, you guys don't need to condition approval with it. And, and then the, uh, the, the, they're not required to provide a landscape line until final development plan, so. If that answers your question.
I was just verifying that for our purposes, we can't, um, make a condition about ADA accessibility because it's going to be, that's not what we're talking about right now. We're doing the preliminary development plan. That'll come along the way.
But, but we'll make sure that.
Yeah. You guys will make sure it applies during the final.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, if it's, if it has to be consistent with, um, U D O code, U D O for section five, that would require ADA compliance in that section. So it would not be compliant with.
But that's what I'm saying, they'll do that at the final.
I understand what I'm.
Saying like, right now, they don't have to, like, show every little detail because this is a preliminary plan.
Right. The, the charge we have is to make sure it's consistent with the U D, section five of the U D O. This is not. That's why I'm saying it can be made as a condition. I understand that it doesn't have to be there presently and that it can be worked through. But it should be a condition, is what I'm arguing.
Make the motion, then you can do it.
And we are talking about, uh, we're talking about accessibility from the handicap spot to the second lane here. Then also this sidewalk here being, doesn't create a very range in order to, uh, to help out with the tree situation, which is something we can do with that final development plan.
Correct. It's ADA accessible. Does that mean they have to have concrete path all the way over there?
That would be a hard focus.
Or can they just put an ADA spot by that building?
That's probably, well, I think, um, one of the options could be to put it, I, I mean, he's the engineer. I guess I shouldn't speak for him. But maybe we could put it right next to where, where, where that turns off. Maybe we could just have a pull street in and then just figure it out. Even, there's a back, there's actually a back entrance there.
I mean, either way, run, I need to run a sidewalk over that, either to that ADA ramp or run a sidewalk from the parking to that building. So we'll play around with it, but we.
Yeah, I think there's some definite options on it.
We, we'll see what you're going for, so. So it, the service yard in its current configuration, if we were just to make that a pervious path from the service yard to the front door tie-in, that would be okay with you?
In its current location, I would prefer it not be there. It's, it's close to that tree. I would prefer.
Could it be accessed from the other side?
It could.
If you could maybe just mirror it.
Sure. Easy enough.
Anything else? Can I get a motion? Or you want to go ahead?
I'll make a motion. Um, oh, I do have, I'm sorry. I've had more notes. And this is a suggestion. I understand that this is not a final landscape plan, but you got live oaks showing on that tree canopy coverage plan, and the live oaks that you're proposing are just a few feet from the building footprint. And I would just caution you that those get big, and you don't want a maintenance nightmare in the future trying to keep those pruned off of the building. So I would just suggest giving yourself a little more space, um, between the live oaks and your, the existing buildings.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation on that?
On how far? I mean, I.
She's like eighty feet.
Yeah.
I, I don't like to put overstory trees personally any closer than fifteen feet from a building, but, and that's still a little close, especially if live oaks, that's even still a little closer. I, I understand, but I've, I've seen live oaks placed five foot from the building.
Sure.
It would be my recommendation. All right. Now I can make a motion. Do we have our motion page? We're done with the final page.
Yeah.
Um, I make a motion to approve the application with the condition to provide an ADA compliant path to the, uh, building one B.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to number two, one-twenty Persimmon Street. It's a development plan requested by Sam Connor on behalf of the property owner, James Jepco, for approval of a preliminary development plan application. Dan?
Okay, thank you. Preliminary development plan for one-twenty Persimmon Street. It's a request by Sam Connor on behalf of the property owner, James Jepco, for approval of the preliminary development plan application. The project proposes six thousand six hundred square foot commercial building, including one thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of office space and four thousand eight hundred square feet of storage space. The mural point six eight acre property is on Schultz Track P U D and is located at one-twenty Persimmon Street with its Bluffton Park master plan. Here's the location of it, uh, just south of Bluffton Parkway on Persimmon Street. And aerial view of the same location. The applicant, the application is for preliminary development plan located within the Schultz P U D and is subject to the standard set forth in the Schultz Track P U D Development Agreement and Concept Plan and the Bluffton Park Tracks B, C, and the Master Plan. The project proposes a six, six thousand six hundred square foot commercial building, including one thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of office space and four thousand eight hundred square feet of storage space. The proposed development meets the minimum parking space requirements of twelve standard parking spaces and two accessible handicap spaces. Staff comments were reviewed at the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Development Review Committee. The applicant provided a response to comments on March twenty-ninth. A letter of approval from the Bluffton Park Commercial P O A for site lighting, landscaping, and architecture will be required at time of final development plan submission. Here is the site plan, a little bit closer view of it. Um, this is Persim, Persimmon Street. Um, enter, entering, entering on the south side of the lot, providing the appropriate parking spaces. We have a dumpster, whoops, dumpster location back here. We have fleet parking. It's also required parking in the very back. This is thirty feet wide as you enter into the parking area in the back, so it's a little wider than usual to provide for loading as well. Um, the planning commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section three-ten-three-A of the U D O in assessing the application. This is the same review criteria I just showed you. And the planning commission has the authority to approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. And town staff finds the requirements of section three-ten-three-A of the U D O is met and recommends that the planning commission approve the application as submitted. And I can take any questions you have. Mr. Connor is here as well. To answer any questions you may have for him.
Anybody want to start with Dan or? Dan, would you like to speak on behalf of?
I'll open up there in case you have any questions. Um, really don't have anything extra to add. Um, it's just going to be contractor's offices, um, office in the front and warehouse in the back. Uh, there'll be bay doors in the, uh, backside where the fleet vehicle parking is.
Questions to Dan?
Are you planning to, um, fence in the fleet vehicle parking area at all, or are they planning on?
No, not to my knowledge.
Um, for the enclosure for the dumpster pad, do they have, have they picked what, what they're doing for the fencing for that yet?
Um, just timber, timber.
It'll be a wood fence?
Yeah.
Um, a couple of concerns I have, um, just from a, and I believe the guidelines support this, and I don't know if you've had a conversations with the P O A, um, review, and I know that's not the correct. There, yeah, there A R B, which I don't think is, anyway. Um, there, there should be foundation planting required between the building and the parking lot. And so I'm a little concerned spatially because that's not reflected here. Um, so I don't know, like I said, I don't know if you've had conversations, but that may come up.
Okay, yeah, I can, I'll double check, um, what their requirements are on that. Uh, I think it's, uh, the foundation planting in front of the building is required when the parking fronts, uh, the main road. So if the parking had been in front of the building with the building behind, I think that that's a requirement.
That, it's not how I read it, but they may interpret that differently. Um, the other concern I have is, um, with that dumpster being located so close to that wetland buffer is because I don't know what kinds of things are going to be dumped in this dumpster. I would hate for anything to run off from the dumpster into our wetland buffer. Um, so I just would want it sloped either away or some kind of curving to keep it from direct flow from the dumpster into.
Yeah, we can, we can grade that to, to have it not discharged toward the wetland buffer. Uh, it's slightly.
And that may get caught in stormwater anyway, but.
Okay. Um, yeah, the, the site on that back corner is a little bit higher right there anyway, and it drains toward the road. So that won't be, that won't be difficult to do at all.
Um, the parking calculations, as you've shown them, don't include for the warehouse. You only included for the office on this. Um, I just want to see that finished out. I know you've got the parking there. I just want, would like to see the table completed with that information. Um, the other question, I'm not sure if you, you may be able to meet this, I don't know. But without the tree coverage, obviously, you're going to have to have, be able to meet that coverage requirement. And I just don't see, I just don't know if you're, I just don't know because I don't have anything to show me whether you're going to meet it. And I'm mildly concerned, but I, it's not enough to say that you can't do it, so.
Okay, yeah. Um, town staff was over that in the, um, in the pre-application meeting, so I'm aware of the tree canopy coverage requirement. Um, and I don't think it'll be hard to meet. Um, they, they have a, the street frontage requirement is to plant live oaks up front already anyway.
Yeah.
So we'll just, we'll incorporate other plantings.
Yeah, and there's a requirement to have those, I think it's every fifty feet, ten feet from there, two and a half inch caliper further, yeah, guidelines.
And Sam, you've worked on other lots like this in that area, correct?
Yeah, this is my fourth one in that, in that same little area.
Very familiar.
Working in there.
Gotcha.
Oh, and can you label the, um, buffers? I know it's just a nitpicky thing, but it's easier to read the plan when you got the information. That good.
Do you want to make a motion?
Um, yeah. Make a motion to approve as, uh, recommended by town staff as submitted.
I need to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Item number three, Washington Square Lot Four Starbucks. A request by G Three Engineering and Surveying on behalf of the property owner, the Carrera Bluffton Partners L P, for approval of a preliminary development plan application. Dan?
Okay, thank you. It's a preliminary development plan application for Washington Square Lot Four, which is a Starbucks coffee house. The request by Mary Kramer of G Three Engineering and Surveying L L C on behalf of the property owner, the Carrera Bluffton Partners L P, for approval of a preliminary development plan application. The project proposes a twenty-five hundred square foot commercial building to serve as a Starbucks coffee house. The one point zero three acre property is on Buckwalter P U D and is located within the Berkeley Place Parcel C Four Master Plan and the Washington Square Development Plan. It's the location of the property. It's on the west side of Buckwalter Parkway. Said it. Here it is, um, superimposed over an aerial. The application is for preliminary development plan located with the Buckwalter P U D, subject to the standard set forth in Buckwalter P U D Concept Plan Development Agreement, the Berkeley Place Parcel C Four Master Plan, and the Washington Square Development Plan. The Washington Square Development Plan was approved for construction on October one, two thousand and eighteen, with the developer constructing roads and infrastructure to allow for future development of individual parcels. Project proposes a twenty-five hundred square foot commercial building to serve as a Starbucks, which is a permitted use within the Buckwalter Commons Planning Area of the Buckwalter P U D. Uh, staff comments were reviewed at the March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three Development Review Committee meeting. The applicant provided a response to comments on April twelve. And a letter of approval from the Washington Square A R B will be required at time of final development plan submission. Here is the site plan, a little bit closer view of the site plan. Um, this is Bleecker Street in the back. This is, uh, the suburbs will be accessed here. We, we have, uh, if you're going through the drive-through, you come in the, the back access point, and the queue's up here. This is showing twelve queuing spaces. Looks like maybe about twenty queuing spaces before we get off of the property during busy times, if they ever get as busy as that. Um, the, uh, there's, there's access for pedestrians that park and walk into the building. The, the, this back parking area is, it's provided here. The front parking area, there's two ways to get into the Starbucks. This is outside patio area, detention in the lower corner down here. Um, just north of this is Low Contré Fresh, if you're familiar with the. The planning commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section three-ten-three-A of the U D O in assessing an application for preliminary development plan. Our review criteria are the same as the two previous projects. Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action. That's approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. And staff finds that the requirements of section three-ten-three-A of the U D O is met and recommends that the planning commission approve the application as submitted. Um, if you have any questions for me, let me know. Ms. Kramer is here to answer any questions. She's the applicant on this.
Would you like to speak, Ms. Kramer?
I'm driving while I'm going down here. I am here to, is there any questions that you may have?
Thank you.
I know that we are still working with Washington Square. I can tell you that, and it's over Colors of Landscaping at this point.
Do you guys have anything? Sam, you want to?
Yeah. So how are they going to get from the parking? I don't see laid out completely, but from the parking area here to the coffee.
I can't see where you're parking, where you're pointing. No, 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 no.
Yeah, um, you know where that line is coming in.
Will you show him how to get him parked into the front door of the building?
Oh, with the front, yeah, the front door is, there's seven spots.
Yes, sir. Alrighty. Alright, that's a double entrance there. Front door's right here.
Mm-hmm.
And there's another door here. Um.
Okay, so that's the walkway, okay.
Yes, sir. You will not, this is big, do not enter, cannot go this way. Uh-uh, turn around. You're going to have to come this way. Or go through the drive-through.
Oh, okay.
This way, sorry. This thing is fine. Or through the drive-through. Yes, sir. Does that answer it or do?
Okay. Confusing.
Jim, the, what's different, I think, about this and what you're used to is that we're in a development in Washington Square, so the street face is really, was it Bleecker Street? Going this way.
Yeah, Bleecker's right here.
Yeah, so that's really the front.
Okay.
So be the.
Thank you.
That's our first.
Any questions, Jim? Good.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
I have concerns about the parking lot layout. Um, my primary concern is from a health safety welfare standpoint, um, that crosswalk that you have when you first come out of the drive-through.
So that would be for delivery of the trash.
Are you referring to the?
This one, I'm not going to, the, at the drive-through.
I'm reading what he just was circling with his cursor.
Right.
Okay.
With the other.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
With the understanding that, that the folks, folks that choose to park here would have two opportunities to get into the building, across the sidewalk here or across the sidewalk here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and if they choose. Yeah, and if they choose to take the one on the upper end, there's a pedestrian vehicular conflict there, people get done with their order, they grab their drink, and now they're putting their drink in their cup holder, and they're not paying attention. Um, and so I've got major concerns with that access or that spot right there, because I think that's a, that's a, that's a real problem for me. Um, and then you compound that with another crosswalk immediately after that, and I understand that that's really for the dumpster access, but it's also serving parking lot as well, so they are, it, so it's like, it's twofold, and it's just a lot that you're looking out for when you first come out of the drag, when you're, you're already, your mind's going somewhere else, and so I don't, I don't like that. Um, I don't like the dead end for the parking, um, on that, on the portion that basically parallels the access easement on the adjacent parking lot. Um, I don't like the way that addresses Bleecker Street, because I don't feel like that's a, yeah, where that dead end is right into this main drive, I think is awkward. I'm, I've got a major issue with the dumpster basically being at the front of this. I think there's opportunity to place that dumpster somewhere else.
We had originally, well, we had it there. Thank you. Yes. We moved it here, but with that configuration, it actually faces Buckwalter. And that was not left, so we moved it back here.
I think it's easier to buffer and screen when, in the location that you were just pointing to.
And is that to, due to a lot of meetings that y'all have had with them, staff and start, and the owner? Y'all have gone back and forth about the dumpster location, correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And then, as a resolution, the.
You, you had provided a second site plan at one time, that was showing it in the lower location. I think there was back and forth between you and our stormwater department. Was that associated with this at all?
No, sorry, come up there, you.
Right.
The, um.
Development review.
The development review, correct. Remember, we had it here, I brought you the plan because Starbucks wants it here, where I have my thing.
Right.
But it faces.
But the door is open, face.
Right.
Parking.
And they said.
No.
We're okay with heavy, heavy, heavy landscaping and it located where, because I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
So. No?
I just, I just don't think you can heavily landscape that. The sky pencil hollies that are proposed are thin and narrow, and they're not gonna do a great job of it. You're just gonna have spindly-looking plants shoved up against a wood fence, and I think it's not gonna thrive, and I think it's not gonna look good, and I think you're gonna see it really well from the road and from the parking lot and as you're entering, exit the property, and I just think it's a poor placement. Um, and I understand that maybe I'm in conflict with the town staff at this point, and I, I just think that you could place it there where you were talking about and find a ways to screen it. I mean, there's, there's a landscaped plant bed that's basically running along this eastern side that can provide additional planting to provide screening from the location as it was previously proposed, uh, which I would much prefer to place this more interior of the property, so it's a little more concealed. And I think you've, even with that angle, the, the way it was facing the roadway, that buffer is there to screen it, so I just, I would ask that the staff reconsider if possible, um, how they better screen that in that, in, in an alternate location.
Let's not have that. I didn't throw that other decision.
So when the dump truck would, the garbage truck would come in, in the other location, so they just?
How would they do that?
How do they come in and out?
Yeah.
Oh, we've got it. We had this here widened, it was wider, so the dump truck could get in, do its thing, and then come back out and around.
Okay.
But it, it was wider, so.
Right, and did that affect your parking spaces amount?
I wouldn't be messing with the parking anyway, but no.
Okay.
We did not.
So is that something that town staff can work with them on again and revisit that issue?
Yeah, we'll look at when, when, when you submit your final landscape as part of the final development plan. Of, if you relocate the dumpster application, staff will be okay with that. It just depends on if the plantings that are proposed are screened and.
I just wanna make sure they're not getting in trouble with any other, your, any other approvals, if they do move it, since I know that there has been a lot of talk back and forth with it, so.
Right.
In that, in that previous example, did you have that parking lot that was with, with the dead end portion in that previously proposed plan?
Yes, I have, I've always had that. It's too close to the other entrance to provide another entrance.
Right.
Yeah, see, I'm way too close.
Right, 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 no, but you've always had parking along that section?
Excuse me?
You've always had parking in that area?
Here?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if there's another way to configure this where it doesn't result in the dead end, where you can push this forward, and instead of having basically this perpendicular, you're losing, you're losing a lot of potential space in this configuration. I think that you could potentially pick up some parking, remove the dead end section, and have the building and that courtyard basically face Bleecker Street, rather than having this parking lot have an adjacency to Bleecker Street. And, and shift all of that parking, so it's basically a continuation of those seven spaces that are running parallel to the staff drive-through.
I don't.
That, is that making sense? Nope. It's your face.
Right, yeah, um, but if something were to be drawn on there that you would, like Starbucks to take a look at, that comes from corporate, so I have to.
You have to work with corporate on how to do the part, right?
So it won't be G Three Engineering, I'll take it to corporate.
Yeah.
And then, but they would have wanted the dumpster in.
And the, the parking as designed, it isn't, uh, an issue as far as vehicles to get the vehicles into the parking spot.
No, it's not, this isn't a question of whether you can get the parking, the vehicles in the parking spaces at that, in that, the location proposed on those seven spaces where the handy gap parking.
Here?
Right, correct. It's not a question of whether you can get them in there. This is a, my issue is the relationship of this parking area to Bleecker Street is not beneficial to Bleecker Street. Like, I would much rather.
I don't really have access to Bleecker Street whatsoever.
Um, I'm not proposing that you plunge through either.
Roll out so that we can see the, uh, the fresh marketplace as well, so we can kinda see it together. Like the aerial or something, I don't know, something so we can kinda see what it.
They do have an aerial.
Yeah.
Oh, because they have their parking like up to the street, right?
That, this is under construction here, so I don't think we're gonna be able to see it.
They've got some buffer, they've got buffer plantings.
Right, and this is under construction, right, yeah. Can you get Google Earth on here? Because it's got a better picture.
Uh, yeah.
And you can see they're building townhomes currently across the street, and of course, the sidewalk we will be putting in front along Bleecker Street.
Not Google Earth, but Google Apps.
There's just not a lot of planting between, there's not a lot of ways to screen that, and it's a dead end road, which is really super awkward, and I'm sure that's not your, I understand that's a corporate thing, not a G Three, um.
No, it doesn't matter, it's still an issue, so. Yeah, submit.
It is the same photo, but you can see the parking, the, uh, what is it, the, this, this is the same access, that would be, that, it's actually sits on Low Country Fresh property, the majority of it. Um, and so your access points line up with the, is that right, with this access point and the rear access point.
Buckwater, Walter, sorry. Walter is also a higher road, as you drive it, it's elevated so much. I don't know, I mean, my screening's gonna have to be. I'm gonna have to not see the dumpster. Uh, I was just going back to that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're going back to the dumpster.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, the, the, we've got shrubs that can get big enough to, it, it may not be on day one.
Would it help if you took out the last spot? And then just shifted everything so it has more green spaces?
I mean, I don't like it's, I just don't like, I don't like its relationship with that monument in front to that front entrance, man, you're.
What are you, what are you, what are you meant to wear?
The, you see the rectangle right next to the, the dumpster, that's just to the top of it?
The, the sign?
Yeah, I don't like its relationship with that, I don't, it, I mean, I, that sign even, I'm a little worried about just visibility of.
Well, you know, you know, the sign.
You know what you're talking about?
They, they showed a proposed location for, for signage.
Yeah.
And they have to come in with a separate location, right? And at that time, will, it, it may not be exactly where it's shown on here. You're not approving the sign locations.
Nor will it be that sign, that size, excuse me.
So, I, I don't like its adjacency to that parking, to your front entrance as you're coming into the parking lot.
What?
I think it's awkward even to access a little bit even as the dump truck, but they, I'm sure they can make that work there.
Dump truck or duck?
The trash truck, the trash truck.
He's coming in here.
Yeah, and he's coming.
Here.
Right, almost down.
If it's there.
There, correct, yeah.
Or even if it's here, and he still has to come around and go this way, yes, sir.
As we bounced around a lot, I'm a little bit confused. What's the problem with the parking in, on this?
Well, we were, I was talking about the parking, she came back to the, she came back to the dumpster. We were, when we started talking about the aerial, she talked, started, that's when we.
So, what I'm asking, was asking you is, if you got rid of that last spot, um, where it's like, since three R, whatever, the.
Oh, you're talking about over there by Bleecker Street.
Yeah.
You're back, you're talking.
That's what I'm trying to.
I thought you were talking, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the, the spot.
Yeah, that's about right there.
Dumpster.
I thought that's what she was talking about, is she didn't like that being so close to.
I was, we, we went back to the dumpster, anyway.
So what I'm saying is, if you don't like that, why can't you just get rid of that space? I don't know if you have enough spots, but if you got rid of that space and had that as a landscape buffer, then it's the same thing as Low Country Fresh, that's all I'm just getting at.
Yes.
Well, if I move this parking here, I could put more parking in. There you go.
So we just gotta make sure the town's okay with that.
Yes, we just gotta make sure that the town is.
That and Buckwalter, what you, what you submit at final development plan.
Okay, and Washington Square people. Starbucks people like the dumpster in the other location, it's closer to the kitchen.
Yeah.
Easy to put the trash in and out.
Yeah.
So, they were all about that. Do you have any other questions for me?
So, if that happens and those parking spaces then are gained, what happens to the other ones that we were just talking about that, on the, um, Bleecker and?
The dead end.
The dead end area? Would that just be handicap, or would that be, because now you've gained spaces, you might have them on.
I prefer the handicap at the center for the, just for the purposes of grading it and making sure it's ADA compliance. That's where I want the handicap, I can take away a space, and so that I have more room to.
Yeah.
Buy earth and, and plants, so that Bleecker Street is looking better.
Yep.
Okay? That, that resolves two things, one issue.
Counting.
Okay.
And so then, leave the dumpster, get rid of one space.
She'll make, she'll make the motion.
I was just gonna say.
Oh, any other questions?
Um, I, I'm still, um, I still don't like that pedestrian crossing right as you're coming out of there. It, you're.
You know, you could maybe, maybe a left for it. Uh, obviously, you're gonna have hot coffee in your hand, and that's the last thing you wanna do once you get it, is drive over on home, but something to slow it, tail it down.
And I know people don't look at, read signs, so I don't, I mean, I can tell you to put a sign out there, and that's not gonna solve it. I, I would much prefer it was actually crossing ninety degrees, like it was going straight across, so that as you're standing, as you're sitting in that spot, you see the pedestrian cross before you take off.
Ooh, okay.
But I, you gotta, I mean, how you work that, that was gonna be.
Break the sidewalk down, the parking, no, that's going around a certain view, so I'm gonna get your. Um, yeah, let me play with it.
Okay.
But I understand what you mean by ninety, right there at the window.
Yes.
Understand what you're saying.
I mean, it's not that you, it's not that you're eliminating the intersection of it, it's what you're doing, like, at that moment, like you have a chance to see them before you take off.
Where you try and mow them over, and they're.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah.
Like you dummy?
Well, she's probably going on the. Bring the cross heater? Maybe bump that island? Well, let me look at the radius.
Turning radius, yeah, yeah, um, mm-hmm. And it, and it's a lot of maneuvering coming out of there, which is tough, but.
No, I like, well, we've got thirteen cars here, do we have to have thirteen, or is it twelve? I heard somebody mentioned.
I, I, I thought you had a number that is twelve.
This is twelve.
You should, twelve.
Oh, not safe, okay, so do we have to have twelve?
So they're a magic number that we're trying to aim for?
Yeah, Starbucks requires something.
Well, this is gonna be reviewed by corporate, but my suggestion then would be, take the building down, and then make that, oh, right there, ninety.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got plenty of room.
Move the building down.
Pardon me?
Move the building down.
That's easier. Honestly.
You'll lose, you'll lose some of the queue.
Yes, sir. Here. I love it.
You've got some of it, yeah.
At twelve, usually it's ten for most other places.
Well, and it kinda still looks like, Dan was saying, there's, um, room for twenty before they are not on their property, which is helpful.
And if you move it down, you might be able to get some foundation planting around the building, for it.
Oh, I know Starbucks is gonna make it lush, uh, I mean, honestly, they've got the money, money to spend on landscaping, so.
Yeah, like right now, it's.
We haven't seen the landscape when it's.
Nice.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's up at ten, um, alright.
When, uh, you know, next step after this is getting a stormwater permit, so, so you can't do large modifications to the site plan, or to.
I'll be with it, so. I'll definitely be on the phone with Pam Parker first thing in the morning, if I don't call her, I'm gonna drive home, and we'll discuss moving that down. I just think it will work better.
Okay.
And I'm gonna express that it's been discussed. And we'll move the dumpster back where it was and lash up the buffer between Buckwalter and ourselves, so that when it is grown.
Yeah.
Dan, I saw you got the magnolias.
Thick leaves.
I saw you had the magnolias on that other plant, but then there wasn't anything else, um, to so, to further enhance that, which, if you, it would, if, there's some shrubs that grow relatively quickly in that environment, that would be just fine.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you.
Anything else? Wanna make that one too?
On a roll, she's on a roll.
She is.
Somebody else surely wants to.
You got it.
No, somebody else sure.
You got it.
Alright. Oh, okay. Yeah, I can do it. Um. I. I don't think I can list them as conditions, though, I think I, um, those are only with as, it'd be as recommended by town staff. But work with town staff on, and it's only a recommendation to work, like, I can't, there's nothing, I can't condition it, I don't think.
The dumpster.
I don't think I can condition the dumpster, I don't think I can condition that crosswalk, and I don't think I can condition, because I, there, I can't ask for anything in addition to what the requirements ask for.
I think you can, I think arguably with the crosswalk, because of the health and safety concerns.
Health and safety. Okay.
Safety concerns, you, you could, you could add that as a condition, the, the, obviously, the applicant is, as expressed, will just work with the.
Obviously.
Town staff.
Yes.
Uh, so it's really just whether you, uh, you want to include that as a condition and even at Starbucks, where it says, don't, some reasons, just don't move down.
Mm-hmm.
Really, they have to come back to planning commission, is it that big of an issue where you're, you're concerned with that? Or whether you'd like to, to work with town staff on addressing the safety concerns that you expressed, and that the applicant has acknowledged.
Willingness to, yeah, alright, um, I make a recommendation to approve the plan as submitted with the condition, um, the applicant work with staff on, uh, redesigning the crosswalk from the parking lot to the building to allow for a safer pedestrian access, and, um, work on approving the screening between Bleecker Street and the dead end parking, and look at relocating the dumpster.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, thanks for working with us.
Okay, number.
Okay, number four, the Unified Development Ordinance amendments, it's a public hearing, so I have to call. I don't know, public hearing? No?
Uh, yes ma'am, so you have a public hearing, so you do need to open up for public comment.
Yes. Call away for public comment, once? Public comment, aye. Last call for public comment, okay? Closed.
Charlotte. Thank you, let me, uh, I made a change to the presentation, let me bring that up. Thank you, so, um, we are continuing, uh, making updates to the Unified Development Ordinance, uh, we made some last month, and we'll continue to bring some to you next month as well. Uh, what I'd like to do tonight is just highlight, uh, the amendments that we have, it's not my intention to go through the entire text, but if there's anything that you wanna talk about, I can bring that up. Um, so the amendments tonight, we're making, uh, proposed changes to section three fourteen, Certificate of Construction Compliance, and the intent of this is to strengthen the requirement to obtain a temporary certificate of construction compliance. Right now, we have language in the ordinance that talks about being substantially complete, which is a bit vague, so we've, uh, included language that it, uh, would need to be seventy-five percent, the site or the phase would have to be seventy-five percent complete before a building permit could be obtained. And then we've added a condition as well, um, that the review criteria has to include demonstration of compliance with the application's manual, and that's pretty much standard in our other reviews, we don't have it in this particular one for some reason. With the outdoor sales, we're improving conditions related to display, location, time, and area, um, and we're also extending the type of merchandise that can be sold, we're not limiting it to, or suggesting. That it be limited to only agricultural seafood and seasonal sales products. With regard to the parking amendments, we are making a change to compact parking, the suggestion is that when there are twenty-five or more parking spaces that are required, only then can compact parking be provided. And we're proposing that it be reduced from twenty-five percent of the total requirement to ten percent. Um, with regard to sharing, uh, using public parking facilities, to, um, use a portion of public parking to comply with the parking requirement, we suggest eliminating that, that's a, a difficult, um, provision for us to control. And, um, so, we, uh, would like to see that, uh, eliminated, uh, we are reducing parking maximums to parking minimums, allowing the developer to determine how much parking they need. And then we're also eliminating, recommending that we eliminate golf cart spaces from being allowed to be counted towards required parking. Uh, with regard to the nonconformities section, um, we're changing the requirement that the, uh, UDO administrator would have to make a, uh, determination that there would have to be an adverse, uh, impact on public health, safety, or wel- welfare. Regarding illegal nonconformities, that may make it very difficult to correct an illegal nonconformity, or to abate it, um, so there's a suggestion that, that it be removed. And then we're also recommending that there be a requirement that, um, if there are any changes made to an illegal nonconformity, that, that it would have to be brought up to compliance with the UDO. Uh, with regard to family and single household units, uh, the family definition is proposed to be expanded, to include, um, situations like domestic partnerships and fostered children, as well as single household units, where, uh, the individuals in that household may not be related legally, or by blood. Um, so we suggest expanding that, uh, providing a definition of what that would consist of, and basically, um, the people within the household would function as a family, even though they're not legally, um, there's not a legal relationship. And then finally, we're making a, uh, suggestion that the residential use descriptions be updated for, uh, accessory dwelling unit, to identify what elements would be required, such as a kitchen, a bathroom, a living area, and, um, allow for attached and detached ADUs. And then for single-family attached dwelling, right now, they can only occur on separate lots of record, we're recommending that they be allowed on the same lot for condo, um, situations, and that each unit have ground floor access. So that's it with regards to the text amendments, um, it does meet the review criteria, or the criteria actually don't apply, um, the wine criteria and compliance, the application manuals, the amendments do comply with that. And if you'd like to take an action tonight, you can approve as submitted, uh, make a suggestion for amendments, or deny, and if you choose to make a decision tonight, uh, this will move forward to a June first reading with council, and then for, uh, a public hearing in July. And this is our recommendation.
Any questions for Charlotte?
I've got questions.
Go for it.
Um, for the parking, this may already be in there, um, if you could just educate me a little bit, is there a, um, minimum for anything where we're talking, like, if there's four spaces per thousand, is there a minimum number of spaces, or is it always proportional to the square footage?
There is not, so if you're like in a fractional situation, so, I had heard that you might be concerned with that, so I have some language here.
Okay.
Um, if you want to add that, we can include that, um, I'll need to determine where best to place it in the ordinance, um, but I do agree, it did actually, it came across my mind, and I didn't make the adjustment, but I do agree that I think it should belong in the ordinance.
That way it's clear, I mean, I think it'll just clear my own confusion, yeah, about when it's the right thing, and then I wasn't sure if there was any language about, now that these are minimum requirements for the parking, um, do we need to have any language discussing a maximum? Like, should they be allowed to go to like a hundred and twenty percent before we get to have discretion, or are we just saying they can have as many parking spaces as they need? And I don't know that I have an opinion, it's just a question I thought we could discuss.
When staff talked about it, that didn't come up, and I think, um, I think more and more, I think developers are being more conscientious about the amount of parking, and given the expense of parking, that they're not, um, creating too much parking, and there's probably no likelihood that we're gonna have big box development, which is where, where you usually see that kind of thing. Um, but it may not be a bad idea to include that, um, again, I'd have to work on language, but, uh, I don't have anything prepared for that.
Did it used to say that for the minimums? Was there something about, like, you can only go up to twenty percent more than the minimum?
Right.
Is that getting?
Then the whole maximum.
Yeah.
Five eleven three C, so if an applicant would like to reduce the number of parking spaces beyond twenty percent, or increase the number of parking spaces beyond the maximum in the table, that would be shared by the parking study for the UDO administrator's review.
So that, that's also an amendment to the ordinance, so reduction of parking, we feel is more, um, best, best left to the variance process, rather than allowing the director to approve that, and then the twenty percent, we've removed that since there's no maximum, but, um, if you, if you'd like to put something back in, similar to that, um.
It's more just a question, I don't know if anyone has concerns about it or not, I'm, it was just a question, since we're changing it from minimum to maximum, I didn't know if we were, if there's any reason to be concerned that we would have, like, way too much parking on a lot, it seems like we have the opposite problem, but.
This is primarily downtown Bluffton, right?
No, it's for all of Bluffton, it's the eight, eight percent of the, the land area that's not within the plan development.
This is all of UDO, all of them?
But I think there's other percentages that they have to, like, treat, percentages and open space and different things that'll help cover that, so they're, it's not like they're just gonna max out a piece of, there, there's no way to just max out a piece of it, so, I think there's other things that kind of overlap and cover.
I'm not sure that I, 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 I concede still potential abuse of, of it, and I, and I would much rather have something that gives us some mod, some mechanism for control of, and the fact is.
How do you determine what's too much?
So, what, so what Helen High does is they've got it as, like fifteen or twenty percent over the minimum, and then, i- if you want to exceed that, you still have to provide some documentation stating, you know, proving that you need that additional parking for the.
There, yes, there is similar language right now in the ordinance.
But you're saying that's coming out.
It, it's coming out.
Right, I'm saying, I wouldn't remove it.
That's recommended.
You're saying leave it.
Yeah. Because I still, you know, properties can get redeveloped around here, and it could then open up a property to, and I understand that we've got stormwater requirements that also might help control it, but it's not necessarily a guarantee of control. So, this gives us a little bit more teeth in case we need it.
And, and I'm looking at the language now, that is proposed to be removed, I think very easily, we could rewrite that to the twenty percent, and anything over the, the minimum requirements, the twenty percent, um, it says, um, that a parking study for the UDO administrator's review would be required. So it'd be left up to the UDO administrator to determine the additional parkings needed.
Yeah, I think that's fine, that doesn't bother me. Um, while we're, Lydia, did you have anything else before?
Not on parking, so you go ahead.
Okay, so, since we're on parking, um, does, did this define any limits to the golf cart parking?
Have we ever had limits to golf cart parking? I'm just curious.
So, golf cart parking as proposed, it can't be counted towards required parking, but golf cart parking can be provided.
Yeah.
In addition to the required, uh, passenger vehicle parking, and then we've also provided dimensional requirements, if these spaces are gonna be included for golf carts.
But there's no maximum number that, like.
We don't have a maximum, no.
I just don't, and I don't know if it's necessary or not, I'm.
And I, I think it'll probably get into the issues of buffers and landscaping and.
Right, there's other bounds of how you wanna use your property, since it doesn't count towards the, since it doesn't count for the parking calculations, there's not a lot of incentive to be.
Right, it's probably gonna be only old town, and given speed limits on the other roads, probably, likely not to see golf carts.
Yeah.
Ms. Ms. Dr. Doc, would it, would it address your issue, uh, because a golf cart parking space is shown out, not count towards the minimum number of required parking spaces, is now they're dealing with minimums rather than maximums, does that address, I mean, would that address your issue? Just trying to think of a way to. Kind of clean that up without.
Yeah.
Having to put in a whole this.
You're saying, right now, it doesn't count, you're, you're adding the word minimum to that phrase, is that what you're saying? Yeah. What is, it doesn't, it just.
Right now, uh, what, what's being proposed is golf cart parking spaces shall not count as required parking spaces, so if you add, shall not count toward the minimum required parking spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, you could, you know, if, it would, it makes sense that it, it would count toward maximum.
Yes, right, yes. Subtlety in language there, yes, I like that, um, you had a comment about, uh, compact spark parking spaces not being, um, being allowed, I think that's not the correct wording that you used, but not being basically allocated until you hit twenty-five spaces.
Mm-hmm.
And, my con, only concern with that is if you had a property where you only had like twelve spaces that were needed, but you have this beautiful tree you're trying to save, but it's right in the middle of the way, and you, but you could put a fifteen foot di- deep space there, still basically meet your parking calculations, but it's gonna be one compact space. There could be an occasion where you're trying, like, for tree saving measures, maybe an exception could be ma, a rule, to the rule could be made, is that possible?
That'd be a. Great when a compact car is actually parked there, but typically, I don't know if typically is the right word, but often people who don't have compact cars will park in compact spaces, and there could actually be more damage done to the tree, if, you, you know, if someone's trying to get their large truck in there.
Well, you're gonna lose the tree then, I mean, uh, you're guaranteed to lose the tree, otherwise, this is an option to be able to actually keep the tree, to be able, and to allow, by allowing the compact space.
She's just saying.
It, she's, I know, she's saying it's, it's still gonna get damaged, but I mean, I'm, I've still seen them.
But why don't you put the burden back on the developer to say you've gotta figure out a different solution for parking, other than.
Yeah.
Damaging that tree? Isn't that what we want?
Yeah.
We'd wanna try that, and if it's a situation where we really wanna save that tree, maybe the variance process to reduce the amount of required parking would be the better method, possibly.
They can always reduce building footprint. And then, they don't need as much parking, and they would have room for more parking.
I mean, I've, 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 I've worked enough, I've worked enough in doing site development, that I, there's been times where I'm like, I'd really love to save that tree, but because I can't use a compact parking space now, I'm just, like, there is no place for me to go of elsewhere to put this parking space, like, I need, I need.
Like I said, then they need to make another concession, so it's, you know.
I just, I think the twenty-five, I think twenty-five parking spaces is an arbitrary number, and I think that there can be, allow, and an allowance for an exception to the rule to save a tree, I don't see that as.
So what would the, if that's an arbitrary number, what is the, take the numbers out of it, what would it, what would it say?
I'm still struggling, there's other ways to save the tree. There's other ways to save the tree, just as Lydia said.
I'm just saying, take that part out, just the, the verbiage, the language, because she's saying the twenty-five is an arbitrary number, so what would it say, if, if the twenty-five is an arbitrary number, what would it say? Differently.
I mean, I, I don't see that, I could see it just being, for any nonresidential use, up to ten percent of the parking spaces may be designated for compact car parking. That doesn't bother me, generally speaking, yeah, I don't see that you have to, it has to be based off of a certain number of cars, I'm not. Sure why that is necessary.
So if you have a lot, has ten spaces, at least one can be.
Yeah.
Charlotte, was there some thinking behind why twenty-five?
Trying to recall, uh, the discussion. And I believe this was, the intent was to get at the larger buildings, the larger developments, um, and honestly, I, I really don't recall where that twenty-five number came from.
Revisit that and look into that, so we have clarity.
Or if the twenty-five is not significant, then just have the language, or it's just ten percent?
On fifteen eleven four standards, um, A one, I see that we're removing angled parking, maybe reverse angled parking as well, as being removed, is that to say that we're not going to be allowing reverse angle parking?
Correct.
Is, what's the thought process behind that?
Reverse angle parking can be confusing, and there needs to be signage, and I, I've experienced this, I've experienced this, uh, for some reason in Washington State, this is pretty common there, but typically, every small parking space is signed, and then you have a bunch of signs in the road, um, or, not the road, excuse me, marking each space, and that can be fairly unattractive. And we probably, if we keep this, we probably need more language that these angled spaces would need to be grouped together, and that they can't be in a situation where you've got parking one way, and then parking another way, um, it's just, the likelihood that we'll use this here, um, seemed very small, so, the discussion was to remove it from the ordinance.
So, coming with this?
So, reverse angle parking, so instead of diagonal angled parking, where you're coming in and going forward, you actually pull in front of your parking space, and then back into it at an angle.
Oh, I've never seen that.
So, the bene, and the benefit, and, and I, and I totally hear your saying, I agree, you cannot be having isolated incidents of reverse angle parking, because that would be an absolute problem.
I don't really like backing up into regular stuff.
Well, I actually, so it's act, it's actually really nice, because, one. Well, I actually, so it's actually, it's actually really nice because one, when you're backing into the space, instead of backing into a drive aisle where somebody's zipping on paths and I got, I'm sitting in my little tiny Civic, or you know, Civic or my, my Velocitor and I got my boss's big gigantic truck next to me and I can't see around his big gigantic truck till I'm, my behind's out there in front, about ready to get hit by somebody. What it does is that means that I can pull forward where I have greater visibility. So it's really beneficial from, like, and when I'm backing in, I'm fully visible, I can see in front of me and I can see behind me, so I'm, and I'm, I've stopped traffic so that they're not likely to hit me. So that's what's really nice about it. Additionally, if you're like getting kids out of your car, so what happens when you're reverse angled in, your doors come out so that they're basically your blockade between your kids coming out and your drive aisle, which is also a great little benefit. So it does have its benefits, which is why I don't want to necessarily, and there are situations, situationally, if you did have it grouped and you did have it properly signed, where it would make sense.
Well, and to add to that too, um, usually this will be on public right of way and since we don't own most of the right of way in town, I mean, the likelihood that the state would approve this is probably small, I would think. And I don't know what situations we would have where we could actually have reverse angle parking in town.
Do we have it?
No, we don't.
So you're saying this, this verbiage isn't intended for private lot development? It's only in public?
It could be, but I, I mean, I've not, I don't know why someone would necessarily do this in an internal parking lot, not to say that they wouldn't, but the only places where I've seen it and in my research, it's always on public right of way. Because it becomes a traffic, I mean, in a parking lot, you're going to back out very slowly and there's no speeding sometimes there is, but, um, you know, there aren't speeding cars and it's easier, um, you know, to back out of a parking space. But in public right of way, it's a safety issue too. You can back in, reverse angle and you can see cars coming. Um, but that's not a situation I don't believe that we're going to have experience here.
And technically the removal of this phrase doesn't prohibit your ability to do it. All it does is not specifically allow it.
Correct, and if we keep it though, I do believe we'd need to have a bit more language regarding, you know, how it would be acceptable, for example, that they're going to have to be grouped together.
So even if we remove it, remove that phrase, you could still propose reverse angle parking on a project, but there's still no parameters associated with it. So the problem still exists? Potentially.
Potentially, I mean.
I think, uh, I, I. The way I, I believe a court would look at this is when there is specificity as to where parking is permitted and. I, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain it without going directly to, you know, recent real life issues that were not breaking as a foil. Um, when you have, when you have something that is permitted, that is limited in scope, a court reviewing that, U D O would say by permitting a limited subset, you're effectively prohibiting the remainder of that, of that use. So if you say, you know, I don't know, what is the, uh, angle parking is a little bit difficult. A little bit difficult because there's, it's not like there's reverse angle parking in the defined terms I can, as I understand it, straightforward angle parking. Um, and that you're permitting, you know, straightforward angle parking. So I think this one is a little bit questionable, to be honest with you, as to whether it would be permitted. Uh, but. And I, I certainly understand why staff is recommending this be removed because if, as long as you have an explicit allowance of it without any sort of regulation or any sort of limitation, you're putting yourself, you're, I mean, you're, you're creating some, a potential issue there. You know, obviously it'd be cleaner to prohibit it, reverse angle parking, if that's, if that's the actual goal.
I actually don't want to, but.
No, I, I, I'm just.
I, I think that you could remove, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I wouldn't stand on the hill taking that out. It, it does make it cleaner from a, in kind of a application standpoint, but.
I think that's, I think that's really from staff's perspective. If attempting to regulate reverse angle parking without anything in the U D O except an explicit allowance of it is going to be much more difficult than the U D O being silent as to it with a record of having, you know, removed it from the U D O with the intent to not allow it. So obviously there's, there are arguments that would be made, that could be made that I think are unlikely to ever come to fruition. I, I don't see, I don't see there being a demand for the reverse angle parking to be so great that somebody.
Yeah, I still think it should be prohibited because I think there are situ, situationally where there are places where it's advantageous. I would just say that if the stance is you don't want it, then you need to be clear about that. And if you are, want it to be clear about how it's done, then we at some point need to come back to that and address it. But I'm not, Diane Hill not taking that, you know, we can take that language out. I just think it needs to be better addressed in the future. And I might be in the minority, but I, but since I'm the only one that.
And maybe this is something that staff can look at.
I just think it's a use, I think it's a useful tool in places and I think to say that you can't do it.
When you say it's a useful tool, you said something about can only be used on a public right of way?
That's where I've seen it used. Um, I, I'm just trying to picture a situation, maybe a private road right of way. I mean, possibly, maybe that's, maybe that was the rationale for putting it in here. I, I don't know.
And ma, and maybe this is just something where i, if, if it needs to be added back in with some regulation in the future, uh, it may be something that staff needs to, you know, more heavily consider it, in particular with town's efforts on the ghost roads. The acquisition of the ghost roads are going to have, will town maintain and manage public road right of ways. So it could be something that they can investigate in the future.
That's all I have on parking.
I just have one more question. I wasn't sure, I thought you could just educate me a little bit on the family and single household. Um, and mostly just that it looks like family is limited to five people without kind of proving that there's more than five of you. And I was curious as to the rationale for not limiting the amount of single household members in the same way, where it could be increased with evidence.
And I'm going to look to Richardson for this. And I, I believe that single household is, would fall under the family definition. Um, I still believe that there's, it would be limited to five, but I could be wrong.
And if you would, would I give you just one moment to look at that? The, um, to kind of give you a background on why that's, why that's being done is, back in, I think it was 2016, 2017, there were some amendments to, there were some regulatory guidance for the Fair Housing Act on, you know, what were considered, uh, limiting definitions of family and a single family. And so, uh, at the time, the Obama administration said, we need to expand that definition to be more, uh, more inclusive of, you know, the different types of families that we have throughout this country. And, you know, from, from a housing standpoint, that certainly, I mean, without getting into any sort of, uh, without getting into, I guess, the more, the politically charged issues from a housing standpoint, you do have a number of different types of housing arrangements that are considered a fa, you know, a single family residence. And so the idea was to use the language that was suggested, um, through the, I believe it was HUD guidance and then used, um, some more guidance that came through in the following years as to how to define that. And from a legal standpoint, it's to limit liability. Because if you start denying these, uh, single family residences based off of what, you know, how this household is configured, who is qualifying as a household, what qualifies as a family, uh, there are potentials for Fair Housing Act claims. And so we want to make sure that we're using a term that has been vetted at the, at the federal level through multiple administrations and, um, is consistent with some of the changes that you've seen nationally. As far as specifically why we are removing, uh, or why we have that limitation of five persons, it's because courts have said, well, that's reasonable. You're not just, you're not creating this based off of suspect classification because otherwise you can keep something so broad that it could be any number of individuals combined together. And we wanted to leave that discretion with the U D O administrator to say, okay, well, if you are a true family, bring us the information, we can make a determination. Um, or if you fit the qualifications, you can, you know, bring us that information. In reality, do we see this happening very often? Probably not. But, uh, it is to give that sort of leeway so that we have the ability to create a presumption of what a family is under our U D O. And then if some, a family doesn't meet that presumption, they can go to the U D O administrator and say, look, we are, we've been together for 10 years, here's our tax bills, here's our utility bills, uh, here's the tuition checks we write off of kids. It's, so you got, you've got ways of doing, uh, delicate issue, but it, it's one that we think is, is essential to making sure that we're, we've got a U D O that's enforceable.
Yeah. So is the single household limited because it's a subsection of family?
I believe so. I think that was, yeah, I think that's the, the reason that it was done that way. Um, you have the single household unit as a, as a, a term that had been used before in, um, some of those federal regulations and some of those opinions. So we wanted to create a term rather than incorporating all of this information in the definition.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure if we thought five people was reasonable without further discussion, that this isn't leaving it up to being like an infinite number of people if you aren't considered a family.
No, I, I think that was, that's the intent. I mean, the intent is, here's your presumption, you have five people living together, that's, you know, that's your presumption. Um, or excuse me, five people unrelated by blood, law, adoption, marriage, domestic partnership or, or judicial order are not going to be considered a presumption is that if it's five or four people, none of those relationships, it's probably not a family. But you can come in and you can prove that you are. I think I said it backwards, first time in a very long time since I've looked at it.
So the single household unit is merely there to describe the, what the family functions are that would help you justify that you are a unit?
Absolutely.
So the formatting then is what I think is confusing to me because of the way it's formatted, it seems like it's two different things rather than a descriptor of the first thing.
That's right, so we didn't, because of the way the definition section is, is written, uh, where, you know, it's alphabetized. Because we have single household unit as a, we wanted to have that as a defined term. Um, and then you have family as a separately defined term. And we, we separated them out and just continued to keep them as a, you know, the alphabetical list of definitions. Is that, is that what you're?
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, another question I have is, and maybe it goes back to the really, that relationship of how it's formatted in the definitions. It seems superfluous to actually have two definitions because really the family is defined by the functions. So do you really need to have family and single household unit for a possibility of confusion about what it means? Because they're really the same thing. Like, if, even if you're a family related by blood, you're still doing these things. If you're a single household unit of people coming together, doing these things, you're, it's by, it's by function, that's how it's really defined. I'm just curious as to why we need both.
I think it may have, and again, it's been.
And maybe just family is so prevalent in our language that we just don't want to get rid of it.
I think that's why, I think it's because family is used repeatedly rather than trying to.
And to edit the entire U D O.
Yes, it, it just made a little bit, it was a cleaner edit to just put in a new definition for family and then add a reference to the single household unit.
Does this definition under family reference the single household unit?
It does.
Okay.
So that's, so the presumption is provided.
Okay. Okay. And I, I have an actual, excuse me, uh, question for Richardson. So at the beginning of the single household unit definition, should we say, start it off with individuals rather than one person or two or more? Does that imply it could be potentially more than five?
That's the part that was confusing to me, was just trying to understand how those two things related, but.
Charlotte, could you ask that question again now that I'm?
So for, um, single household unit, it says two or more individuals. Does that imply potentially that it could be more than five people? Or is there, it's still, single household units still limited to five based on the family definition?
No, so if, um, there is a rebuttable.
I see where you're going.
Yeah, um, so, again, we have a, we have a definition that's largely consistent with how we had defined family traditionally. What we also have added is a presumption that if you don't, essentially if you don't meet that, that traditional definition is a rebuttable presumption that there is no fam, that you don't qualify as a family unless you can prove that you're a single household unit. So, I mean, and because you've, you're going to have an occasion where there are traditional families and otherwise that meet, that would meet that family definition, even though there's six people. So I don't think that the intent was to put a cap on single family and five people, but rather to say, this is the definition of family. This is, uh, if you don't meet that definition, there is a rebuttable presumption that you're not a family. What you need to do is show that you're a single household unit. If you can prove that you're a single household unit, you will qualify as a family, whether you have, whether you are one to, more than five persons related by blood, marriage, or so on and so forth. Again, this is largely written with, uh, you know, help from, uh, the, uh, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development and, um, again, looking at what other, other jurisdictions have done and trying to apply that, that language that they've given, so. If you've got, if, if you've got concerns with the numbers, I don't, I don't know whether the numbers are essential as much as they are about giving some guidance on how we made these determinations.
It was just a point of curiosity for me. I didn't realize that the single fam, I'm sorry, the single household unit ends up getting you to apply the family definition to yourself. So that clears it up for me, thank you.
Yeah.
I do wonder if one person or two or more is superfluous language and you could just drop it to individuals living together, living together, sharing an entire dwelling unit.
I think the idea behind that, because I, I, I thought the same thing. Um, I think the idea was that you can have a single household unit where it's just, just make.
Maybe just one person.
But then we can qualify as a family though.
Well, I think for a single family house, for the pur, for the purposes of using family throughout the U D O, um, you can have a, my recollection is that you can have a family of one, a single family home with just a single person living there.
Right, which case the single household unit wouldn't be required for, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to explicitly define one in the single family or single household unit because it's inherently available to the family unit and non-exclusionary.
I guess that does, that makes sense because you're not going to have, you know, you're always going to hit, it's just a single person, you're always going to hit the definition.
Yeah.
So you don't ever have to go to the single household unit.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, I, I, it, again, it has been a very long time since I've looked at this, but, uh, I think this was back in 2020, 2019.
Before that, I wasn't here.
When this was originally drafted, I'm seeing it announced, I, um, I, I.
It's interesting, Richardson, because in the top line you say it's presumed not to be fraternity, sorority, et cetera. But if you read the single household unit, that defines what a fraternity does. So there's, I'm not sure what we. So there's, I'm not sure what we have up on top, but, you know, I've been in a fraternity, my kids have been in a fraternity. I, that's what a fraternity does, a single household, that's how they live.
So they, they would not qualify as a single household unit?
They would, they would.
Which might be okay.
Or a, or a boarding house.
And, and that's why we, so the term family shall not be construed. So that, I, I, the idea was we wanted to make it very clear that these were not.
Okay.
This, 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 these five were not fraternity, sorority club.
And that may be pertinent in some specific language elsewhere in the U D O where family comes up.
It doesn't stop them though, right? Because basically they can say, cool, we're not a family, but we are a single household unit. And so we're entitled to everything a family is entitled to.
That would depend on the language of the, the specific phrase of the U D O.
But say, a- and again, with this, you know, we're kind of testing out the legal issues here with this one. And there, I mean, obviously there are a number of different arguments that can be made about, about this. And that's why it's, we're getting so much guidance from, uh, from the federal government audit. But the idea here is this is, we have very explicit language on what does not constitute a family. That being said, if you don't fall into what is not a family or what is a family, you fall somewhere in between, there's this rebuttable presumption and it's by proving you're a single household.
But does that mean that if you're a fraternity that would qualify for a single household unit, you don't get to claim that you are a single household unit because they're prohibited?
You can claim you're a single household unit, but you're not a family.
But isn't that essentially the same thing?
No, I think there's a rebuttable presumption that there's no family exists unless you can prove that you're, but it's still rebuttal.
But you couldn't stop them from being a single household unit because they're a fraternity.
So a fraternity house, so if you have a restriction that it's, you know, let's say it's a, um, what's a preserved district in the, the neighborhood or the riverfront edge? Let's say we don't allow, um, multifamily in the riverfront edge. I can't recall if we did or not, as it is, we only allow single family households. A fraternity could not have, and there could not be a fraternity house in there under that definition because they are not considered a family and that is trigger. So if it's a single family household, you know, they are not, shall not be construed, that's mandatory. So fraternity, sorority, club, monastery co- uh, convent or institutional group. That is, that's, that's the intent. And I understand there's that circular argument. And I think that's why we include that explicit language to avoid, well, you know, we have all these, we meet all these same things. But no, you can't be a family if you're one of these five.
There's the gray area of me and my three girlfriends going and getting the house and the neighbor thinking we're a sorority, but we're not. But we're also not a family, but we function like a single household unit.
I, I mean, I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna, the reality is that there are, you know, any sort of issues regarding the definition of family and the enforcement of this sort of language is, is going to be, is gonna be very, it's gonna be difficult from all sides because you have a definition that's not really fixed and you have a definition that in large way, in large part depends upon, um, you know, protected classifications of people under federal and state law. So in trying to define this from a zoning perspective, you're wanting to create some flexibility, which is a little bit different from how you would typically have your zoning warrant distracted. And what you want to do is be able to create, again, the, the presumption's the key, that we're creating a fixed definition, but you can overcome that if you can establish this. But also we want to make it very clear that these are not families so that you can't use this rebuttable presumption to try to get around the purpose of the U D O.
That makes sense to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Testing me today. Thank you, Jill, for your help.
I'm very sorry, really. I agree with you though, I was, it made sense after she asked it, I said, oh no.
No, it's.
That was a good definition.
Yeah, no, I agree with it too. I just didn't understand it, but now I do, so thank you for.
No, I, I, and that's, and I, I, no, I do appreciate it. I'm teasing the poor because it is, it's not an easy.
This is a small edit, um, the article seven, um, under the seven point nine, almost all the way down at the bottom of the page, uh, second line from the bottom. In making such a determination, the U D O administrator shall consider all of the facts.
Wait, hey, I've got the all of the.
Yes, thank you.
I bet that's probably a typo on my part.
Yep.
Probably not in the U D O, but I'll check that.
Um, and I, I'm actually a little confu- I'm, I'm kind of not sure that I understand this section. It's, here's how, what I'm thinking I'm hearing, and I'm not sure that that's what I'm hearing. So you can probably speak to my understanding versus what's really written. The way that I'm understanding is this, is this kind of a response to the acquisition of the Ghost Roads so that it's not requiring the town to have to do or not be allowed to do certain things when they inquire that? It's.
If, if, if I can, uh, no, this, this was actually more as, this was more in response to, uh, some of the sidewalk projects that have been going in throughout the town, like on Goody Road, like out in Simmsville. Uh, the May River Streetscape project was one of the one, was one of the main projects that brought this issue to the attention of town staff. So essentially town staff is approaching property owners and requesting easements or right-of-way dedications. From, you know, property owners and the first question is, well, how's this gonna impact the, you know, the future development of my property? But also I think Ghost Roads is, I mean, it is, ties in obviously for the same reasons. But, uh, this one was brought up because we wanted to, you know, have it not be so limiting in which parts of the U D O would not be impacted by the dedication. So the front yard setback, parking lot setback with Greenbelt, we wanted more flexibility about, you know, obviously town staff. Uh, wanted more flexibility with that so that when those questions were raised and asked, you can give more definitive answers on a, a future project. So I, I'm trying to think. You know, if, if, if you have something where you're permitted to develop that based off of your, you know, acreage of it, i- if you have a right-of-way dedication that's essentially going to eliminate, um, your, uh, maximum density based off of acreage and create that sort of constraint. Not only does that disincentivize the property owner from working within the town on these sorts of acquisitions, but it also adds an additional taking claim of, you know, what sort of costs are we gonna have to pay for this? I think it's, it really is designed to further facilitate, you know, uh, cooperative efforts between town staff and whoever's acquiring the easements or, uh, or the right-of-ways and the property owners. Just hold on, the idea is not to disincentivize.
So it's, it's, it's removing the requirements that would be applicable if that road, road right-of-way, where if it hadn't been, those requirements weren't there before they acquired the right-of-way. Now that they require the right-of-way, now the code would exist normally, but in this case, it's allowing them the flexibility not to apply.
It, it's essentially leaving them their safe property line. It acts as if that property line has always been right there.
Okay. Thank you for walking me through that because I was not getting that. One question I have on seven point two point two and the illegal non-conformities is, it's towards the end. Um, illegal non-conformities cannot be changed, enlarged, expanded, extended, unless subtraction is in full conformance of the provisions of this ordinance. Now, it, full may be the way we want that to read and to go. Um, one of the things that I've experienced when you're redeveloping a property is that sometimes, um, it's prohibitive to bring a property into full conformance. You can bring it into greater conformance, um, but you can't. And so improvements don't happen, period. And you think, see things kind of go into decline because they can't get it into full conformance. So I'm wondering if we don't look at that language and consider greater conformance as part of conformance to the provisions of this ordinance. Now, maybe you don't want to be developer friendly, maybe you don't want to allow a situation where somebody's changing, you know, changing a property, even if it's getting into better, greater conformance, unless they are absolutely bringing it into full conformance, but. And I understand that this is the way it has read, so I'm not, you're not, you don't have to make that change. I'm just asking for consideration of that change potentially, which maybe you don't want to do.
I feel like that's more of a legal, um, discussion.
So, so what you, uh, I'm just trying to make sure that I've got, uh, I understand exactly what you're asking. The, the concern is that, you know, the expansion change, enlarging, extending these illegal, illegal non-conformities.
But you can't make that change unless you bring it into full conformance and non-conformity.
Which I think is important because these are illegal non-conformities and not legal non-conformities. So what we typically would be dealing with are, um, an, an attempt to expand a legal non-conformity, which legal non-conformities are those, those structures or uses or signs that are no longer conforming in the U D O, but at the time they were constructed were, so maybe a zoning map amendment changed something from light industrial to residential general and there's a, a light industrial use still on the property. Uh, what you don't want to do, and with this, or excuse me, what this is intending to do is to not allow changes, enlargements, expansions, extensions of these structures, uses, and, or signs that have never been in conformity. So just because you're, you've been there for a long time, it doesn't mean you're grandfathered in.
Okay.
And, and if I may just make a, a clarification on the seven point nine, as I was reading again, I think the primary intent of this, um, when I come back on it, was what we discussed, but also from a density standpoint, say you had, you know, those four acres, but you lose point one or point two as part of a dedication. And say, or, and say it's a, you know, a commercial, a commercial density. If there is a, you know, a, a storm that tears down that building, you're not gonna be able to build that, that structure back to the exact same extent if you didn't have this language. I think this is largely designed to not, not create non-conform, conformities by, by dedicating right-of-ways.
On the outdoor sales portion of this, the four point four point two point eight point one, um, and the new version of it, one of the things I see during, as you see, it explicitly allows for, um, the propane cylinders, which got me thinking about what are all the things you see outside of the gas station? Like ice machines or maybe they're selling wood, I don't know. Things that would be normally outside of the gas station, but aren't a problem. So why, my question is why are we explicitly allowing this? But there are other things that might also then alas qualify, but are not listed. And should we be, how comprehensive should this be?
Yeah, I, Charlotte, yeah?
Yes.
So, and, and unfortunately for Charlotte, a lot of this, again, was worked on back in 2018, 2019. And I think they were planning to bring these, grid management, planning to bring these back before Planning Commission, H B C and Town Council. Uh, and then when COVID hit, the, the majority of the, the focus on the U D O amendments changed and, uh, you know, other priorities took place. So a few of these were put on, on the back burner for a bit. When we initially met with Planning Commission in 2019, 2018, somewhere around there on these issues. And I, I believe it was Planning Commission that had a lot of comments about propane sales. And they wanted to make sure that there was, there was language explicitly about the propane sales. Some of the other issues that we, we have with this is, these are limited to retail businesses. You have to look at what, what is defined as a retail business versus what is, um, what is it, is it a convenience, convenience store or a gas station?
Fuel, convenience.
So there were, there were other things, I believe, that the retail business, trying to remember which, what were some of the businesses that, that, that expressed those concerns about? But maybe, I'll, it's on like Allen Road, I think has a, has propane sales out front. I think there are a handful of others, but I think the idea was they had identified this as a common enough issue that they wanted explicit exclusion. So I don't think the intent was to, fully drafting it was to create, you know, identify everything, but this was one that they wanted to have very clearly identified.
I think most stores have those propane tanks outside. I don't think they're allowed to store them inside.
They're not allowed.
Yeah, so I know Publix has it, Ace has it, Home Depot, they all have it outside.
Yeah, and I think that's part, I think that was part of the reason. And I, I can't remember which commissioner it was that brought up the issue, and it may have even been the H B C. That had expressed that concern that even not, this isn't one where they're allowed to sell them indoors. They have to have, and store them out, outside.
Um, I think I saw also we're removing where you, uh, the five foot clear path was previously, clear walkway for pedestrians, but I don't know that it's in this new language, am I, did I miss it?
I believe it's a D. I don't think it specifies five feet. No, I didn't, shall be displayed in a manner that causes a safety hazard, obstructs any ingress or egress to any building, uh, interferes or interferes with the flow of pedestrian traffic. But we don't identify a dimension.
From a legal standpoint, would it be prudent to reinstate the five feet? Or would it be necessary in order to argue that with somebody who had decided on their own that, you know, 30 inches is sufficient for clear pedestrian space? But a code enforcement or somebody else has decided, you know, or zoning has decided that's not actually. I, I'm ju- i- if there's five foot language of clear passage somewhere else that makes that enforceable and it doesn't need to be here, I don't want to argue that it has to be here and you've done it. I just don't know if we've got what we need to be able to enforce it.
Yeah, I, I think the idea with that one and why, I'm trying to remember if this came from Planning Commission or if it came from H B C or if it came from town staff, is, um, the, the idea was flexibility into, because we're gonna have, you know, you have a couple of different types of, of outdoor sale, outdoor sales, and outdoor sale displays. And so they wanted that flexibility rather than a fixed five feet. Cause in terms, maybe five feet may not be enough for certain, but it may be too much. I think, I think that might be, that, that could be it too, because you have one more feet.
Yeah, it's not five foot wide in most places.
So I, I, again, I think it was just about creating some flexibility, but creating reasonable enough standards of date that let's not create safety hazards or, or obstructions.
It's, I, I agree with you, that it leaves it a little up in the air.
It leaves it a little ambiguous, yeah.
It does.
Um, and somebody might decide 24 inches is enough. And then you're arguing a case over that and I just don't, I don't want a situation where that's allowed.
That becomes a life safety issue though. Like your egress from a building is described in the building code. And so if a code official came by and said it was too small, like you have to, you still have to comply with the building code. You can't obstruct the exit or pathways. And it doesn't extend, like it extends as you're exiting the building. It's not just like what's under roof.
Could somebody put stuff on the sidewalk and force you to walk out into the street?
It says 10 feet from the building, so if a sidewalk is 10 feet from the building. But that was, I would argue that if it's on a sidewalk, that's a public sidewalk, that is obstructing pedestrian access.
The other thing I was worried about with them being 10 feet at the building is that, you know, we've got the eight foot foundation planting. You're, you're now forcing them to put this all on the foundation planting and thereby damaging, destroying or encouraging the removal of foundation plantings as well.
I was getting ready to comment on that about the five feet and because of that eight foot. I remember the discussions that I've been playing commission and H B, or from H B C. Uh, where there was, you know, some concern about that, that language and, uh, the, the ten feet. Um, from the front facade of the building, it's, you know, it's not ma, it, it's not mandatory that people have outdoor sales, but if you're going to have them. These are the limitations that are being imposed. So I, I think that was the way that it was addressed. I understand your concern. Um, that you're essentially within eight foot, is that eight foot mandatory planting area, uh, what's it called?
Foundation planted, yeah.
That by limiting it to within ten feet of the, uh, the building, you're essentially creating, uh, you're incentivizing people. With outdoor sales in the foundation planning area. I don't think that was.
It says that you cannot disturb the required buffers.
Uh, yeah, I believe she covers your concern.
And she.
I just think you're going to have a hard time if you're keeping the five foot sidewalk and the eight foot further there, where are you going to put it if you've got.
Well, I mean, it could be on a porch, you know what I mean? Or they had a. But it doesn't have to be, every single previously developed property has the ability to do outdoor sales.
I think the ten feet's pretty limiting. Being within the ten feet of the building. I'm just not, I'm not sure that makes sense in all cases. There could be, there could be, there could be exceptions to the rule where it makes sense to pocket it over here and it's not that you're saying. It's not more than twenty-five percent of the square footage of your building. It's not that you necessarily, you, you might not be blocking any. Visibility to any roadways, any sidewalks, any foundation planning, but it, there just might not be within ten feet of the building. And I'm not, we're not looking at a specific site, so it's hard to apply that, but it, there could be a circumstance where it doesn't make sense within ten feet. But it does make sense within the property.
Well, it says from the front facade, so it can be in the side buffer, like not the buffer, but if you had a wider lot than your building. It just can't be proud of your front elevation by ten feet, but it can be next to your building.
I, I think the concern at the time was, you know, this more. These outdoor sales migrating away from the building and just cluttering things. And there was also the subsection I was always intended to have the, you know, it wasn't a special event permit. So that, you know, individual businesses can get these special permits if there is a sidewalk sale or something that they want to conduct. Uh, that may not fit within the ten foot, ten foot area within the front facade. So it's, it, it would give some ability to deviate from these rules with. Missions, but also to prevent people from. Littering the, littering the yard with different outdoor sale areas.
Alright, that's all I got.
Been taking notes to summarize this?
I've got, I've got two, two changes that have been recommended and I've, uh, changed in section five eleven three B. Uh, that is the one about the twenty eight, I think it's compact car. So to incorporate, that's what the parking research is, to not remove that section. And revise where it says maximum to minimum.
Oops, sorry, say that again. You're, you're eliminating the, for five, section five eleven three, parking space calculations. Uh, that is. Page eighty-eight of your packet.
Where, uh, if an applicant would like to reduce the number of parking spaces beyond twenty percent or increase the number of parking spaces beyond the. Maximum in the table below, they have to check about parking, so for the U D O measures review. My understanding was that planning commission, or at least some linkers, planning commission, expressed an interest in keeping that language. But having it reflected, we now have minimum standards rather than maximum standards. And then the other revision is also in the parking section, uh, on page ninety. Five eleven four A two. The golf car parking spaces shall not count towards required minimum number of parking spaces. So including the minimum language.
And then there was the third one regarding the fractional parking.
And, uh, there is, there's a section of the U D O under article nine that deals with fractional interpretations. We just want to make sure that we're consistent.
I never looked at that.
Yeah, it's, um. Nine point three C. When calculations result in fractions, the results shall have two significant figures. And any fractional result shall be rounded up to the next consecutive whole number. Um, not sure if that works with your parking or if that works with, you know, all the calculations, but that's what we have at the moment.
Can you also re- eliminate the requirement of twenty-five parking spaces and just simply say it's ten percent compact?
I apologize, but that's in reference to dimensional standards. Rather than the whole number of parking layers, so I think. It's nine point, yeah, nine point three, it starts with, uh, dimensional standards and these regulations shall be interpreted according to the following rules. And guidance. And it has an A B, and when it gets to C, it says when calculations. Result in fractions, the results shall have two significant figures and any fractional result, result shall be rounded up to the next. Second, you pull the number.
Yeah, but it doesn't apply, cool. I don't know if it does, but it sounds like it only applies to dimensional standards and I don't know if parking counts as a dimensional standard.
And I, I, I tend to agree that it applies to dimensional standards, but I don't know whether parking is a dimensional standard. Um, that's, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, make sure that we.
Then we need to clarify that definition, use that or add that definition specific to parking.
Okay, so it sounds like fix that section that we just talked about nine.
I think it would be a separate definition.
Yep, we're adding it to the parking section. Okay.
And then as far as the twenty-five parking spaces. Do we want, uh, and obviously this is, I, if I'm. Is that something that you would like staff to look further into and maybe bring back? If we need to remove that, or is it something that is of concern enough that it needs to be. Stricken and then maybe add it back if staff can produce a, a valid reason for that to town council.
I think maybe staff needs to look into it to see where that number came from there. I mean, a lot of your stuff comes from other legal conformity, so.
If it's not required, we should take it out, but if it's required for some reason, we just don't know what it is.
Yeah, we just don't know what it is.
It would, it would make it simpler, it would make it simpler with that. What did we do with the reverse angle parking?
I think we go, I think we go ahead and have it as it is, but I think they'll have.
That ever has to come back.
But ask staff to look at it. Taking a definitive position on it or if they keep it, probably which.
If they keep it, they have to do more.
Again, this is me recommending, y'all making a recommendation.
Oh, I have another question on that residential use at table five point eleven point three point C. It's got two spaces per dwelling unit and then comma, one space per accessory dwelling unit. Is that to imply that? If there was an accessory unit previously with a dwelling unit previously, that there would have been no requirement? And so now we're adding a space, or are we saying that if there was a dwelling unit, both with the primary building and the accessory building? Both would have been required to have two parking spaces, but we're now requiring the accessory to only have one.
So, um, what's proposed here is what we currently have in the parking for Old Town. And so this would match, um, that provision in the ordinance.
So what I'm asking is. It's more of a question of when there was, there's, there's a primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit on a property. And there's two dwell, you're requiring two spaces per dwelling unit. To me, that would imply that both the accessory unit and the primary would both have had to have two spaces per unit, but now we're only requiring. One for that accessory unit. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
I'm not sure if that's, and what's the thought process behind that?
The likelihood that, um, someone who may be living within the, um, accessory dwelling unit will either be. A single person in there, um, some of our A D U's are also rented out as vacation rentals. And very likely, um, only to have one car there at a time.
It also is going from maximum to minimum, which might be why it's reduced.
Correct. You know, potentially requiring the additional space may make it more difficult or may make that A D U a bit smaller. More constrained, and if we're seeking to have more affordable workforce housing. Um, this may be of some assistance, very small, but who knows, it could be helpful.
Yes, I, I see where you're coming from. I'm not, that's, um, I just, I do know that there's, um. There is affordable housing and what that means is that you tend to, well, there could be a husband and wife that live in that and they could have two cars. And then you're burning, you know, then you got cars parked either in the grass lawn or they're taking up the, on-street parking or, you know. They're, they could be clogging up something else and so. But you could have vacation rentals where there's a couple, you know, the two girlfriends meet, they're both in a car, like to say that there's not, that it's less.
But the reverse would be is what if I own the property and I had the accessory dwelling unit, but I don't have anybody living in it or doing, you now require me four spots.
I mean, you're renting out that space.
So that's why I like the one. Minimum, so you're not having to regulate, there's more than necessary.
Yeah, right, if you need to.
Yeah, well, that's. That's the exercise I.
Cause I just wouldn't want someone to tell me because I have two structures on my lot, I have to have four spots.
If you have a party, anyway.
I don't have parties, so I mean.
I just live in a really small community and I know. But in Sioux, um, there's often not enough parking, so I just, I don't, I don't. I don't necessarily think that's a great idea, but.
Well, that is a whole nother can of worms of like bedroom counts and different things like that.
Oh, yeah.
That's a whole different.
Yeah, and there could be in that dwelling unit, two bedrooms. And you can't, and I guess you can't do the five bedroom. You can't do the parking count by bedroom.
No, that's what I'm saying is that would be unfair. That would never work anywhere. Like someone want to make that recommendation? Some recommendation?
So, uh, from what I, what I heard this evening, I'd be a motion to approve. With the fact that I'm motion to. Recommend approval of the U D O amendments presented by. Town staff with the following amendments that section five point eleven point three B. Uh, not be removed from the code, but rather it remains with revisions reflecting that the new parking standards are. Um, minimums rather than maximums. Section five eleven four A two, uh, with the revision. That golf cart parking spaces shall not count towards required minimum parking spaces. And that the fractional dimension standards should verify staff for parking calculations be incorporated. Into, uh, the U D O fair staff dates appropriate.
I make that question.
Did you also mention the removal of the twenty-five?
I didn't know what, do y'all want?
I thought, I thought the staff was gonna.
And staff look, that would be part of the recommendations, that staff look into that.
And that's, and that's staff review and look into whether the, uh, section regarding the twenty-five. Twenty-five parking spaces for non-residential use, uh, what's the justification for that? I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure whether that should be in your recommendation of approval or whether that should just be a reference that staff provide that to town council. When town council review it, I mean, just. That's up to y'all. Y'all make the decisions. I'm just trying to help you, right?
I'd like it to be in the recommendation.
I think, I think in the approval of it, I think that's. I, I just want to be a written note, not dependent on somebody going and filtering through an hours, a couple hours of the conversation.
We're already making the change to five eleven four A two, so it's not too. Now, if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll propose the motion, as I, as I understand, y'all wish it to be worded and then. Someone can just motion if they agree.
That would be great.
A motion to recommend approval of proposed amendments to the title of the code order, it's chapter twenty-three. Subject to the following applications. That section five eleven three B be revised, um, so that it remains. As written, subject to revision that reflects the new parking standards being minimums rather than maximums. And this is section five eleven four A two, that. Uh, staff research, the, the staff provide some guidance as to why. A map, uh, twenty-five parking spaces was included in that compact. Car designation percentage, uh, that also that. Five eleven four A two be revised. To state that golf cart parking spaces shall not count towards required minimum parking spaces. And finally, that staff add the fractional dimensions, dimensional standard for parking calculations. To the U D O as staff, in the areas staff deems appropriate.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. So any other? Charlotte, anything? We're good? Can I have a motion or two?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.